Okay, I'd like to call this regular meeting of the Board of Selectmen for Monday, December 16th, to order. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, so first Selectmen's report. Kind of a dark cloud over Town Hall today, and our hearts for sure. So I would like to ask for a moment of silence in memory of former Selectman Mark Thorne. I spoke to Barbara this evening, and she's a remarkably strong woman, and her family's around her, and they will be announcing the details of Mark's service sometime tomorrow. But I imagine it will be over this weekend. For those who are watching from home, if you didn't have a chance to read about or watch on Channel 79 the State of the Town Addresses from last Monday before the RTM, I recommend that you find the Vimeo on TV 79's On Demand channel so that you can get a real good snapshot of where we've been this past year and where we think that we're going next year. And I look forward to being back again here with all of you on January 6th to begin our new year and our budget, which will be the most important thing that consumes our time over the next several months. And I will, at the end of the meeting, say it again, but I wish you all a joyous holiday season, Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, Happy New Year, and I hope your holidays are safe and peaceful and family-filled. To you as well. Thank you. Kate?
Just another reminder, tomorrow is the last day to renew your parking permit. We had a number of them in today, surprisingly. So you've got to have it in here by the end of the day tomorrow. And then we will be making some people's holidays because we know we have a certain number who are not renewing, so there'll be letters going out to the people at the top of the waiting list, and that's always fun.
Oh, nice.
It's a fun day when people come in to get their permit because they're usually very happy. The majority of the departments have submitted their budgets, so I will be starting to work on that later this week.
Okay. We'll move on to our transfers. Our first transfer is for legal counsel, and it's in the amount of $3,480 from a variety of accounts into Town Council account.
So earlier this year, the Board of Finance voted to redeem some outstanding bonds. They called them, and typically when we do this, it's a refunding, we issue new bonds to pay off old bonds, but this time they just, they took money out of fund balance to redeem these bonds. So this is the legal cost associated with that. Normally that would have been paid out of the bond funds, but because we were not refunding, we're paying this out of the interest savings as a result of redoing, of redeeming those bonds.
Does anybody have any other questions about this transfer? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve a transfer of $3,480 to legal counsel. David seconded by Sarah. All those in favor? Thank you. By the technology, an information technology assessment requires a transfer of $40,000 from our project for digitizing documents, which I believe is complete.
It is.
And moving that to help fund our technology assessment. So you could tell us a little bit about what we're hoping to learn and work to improve.
Well, when we, Jen and I were talking in budget planning, knowing that the Planning Department, Building Department, basically all the permitting departments were looking at new software, we decided that it was appropriate to ask for an assessment of all of our technology. So you see on the transfer request form, we want them to analyze, you know, what we have, does it meet our needs? Are we able to do things, putting things online because we think that will make, help us be more efficient, save money? Can we reduce the number of systems that we're using? You know, I think I've told you before, we have a number of silos. How can we maximize what we have now? We'd like to do some things like eliminate duplicate entry if we can, have one department's software prepare an electronic version of their revenue receipts to just be deposit, you know, transmitted to Munis, that would save the Finance Department on entry, and so it's a time savings, less errors. We also want to look at our payment methods. What can we do besides credit cards? Can we do things like Venmo, PayPal? How can we do, reduce the number of merchant service providers that we have now? Can we go to streamline our points of sale online? So there's a number of things that we'd like them to do. We did an RFP that asked all these questions, asked, you know, what their process was going to be, have they done this sort of thing for other clients in the state, well, not just in the state of Connecticut, but clients like us. So we received two responses, and the transfer request is based on the lower of the two bids, but also includes some contingency because we feel that there might be a need. Well, we put in 10% contingency as a safeguard against any additional work that we ask them to do. Because the transfer hasn't been, the funding isn't in place, I don't want to say who we plan to hire, but it's a firm that both Jen and I are very familiar with, and I think we'll be very happy with their work.
So if I can just make a point of clarification, when we talk about information technology in this context, we're really talking about the software.
We are talking about the software.
On our technology, not to be confused with the hardware, whose services we procure by arrangement with the Board of Education.
Right, we're not evaluating their services. We are asking them to look at hardware in terms of can we move any of our current systems to the cloud?
Okay.
We have, some of what we do is cloud-based now, but a lot of our software is hosted locally. So we want them to take a look at and evaluate whether or not we have that option.
So in looking at all these items, will the consultant also look at the security of the systems that we have in place, or systems that they would be recommending? And also the redundancy of what our systems are, or does that, would that require some other kind of analysis?
When you say redundancy?
Well...
Do you mean in terms of our backup?
Yes, backup and to be able to recreate should something happen to the system, you know, if we're looking at sort of consolidating our payment methods.
It wasn't specifically called out, but I think that's something so basic that that would be something they would look at.
Okay. Questions about this assessment?
Was there anything else that, you know, we just mentioned the Board of Ed, but any of the other payment systems that occur within the school system?
We're not looking at the school system. We're just looking at the town.
Why? Is that?
Well, because the school system would have to fund their own assessment. We don't...
But would they be interested in joining that, or?
Honestly, I didn't ask them. They do use the same accounting software we do, so if there are things that can be improved with Munis, we'll be able to share that with them, but that's really their purview, and I just, I was focused on doing a plan for the town.
We can certainly let them know what we're intending to do.
Yeah, just to keep them, right.
Yeah. We can let them know that once we, if we agree on this, that we've selected a vendor and we're looking at these things, and, you know, if there's any, any collaboration or information that we glean from our study, we'll share it with the administration for the schools.
Or they wanted to contribute to it and expand it slightly, that doesn't impede the work that you're looking for, you know?
Sure.
I would love to see that.
Thank you.
Kate, maybe I read things a little too tightly, so I'll just ask, in bullet points, between bullet points three and four, we talked about consolidating current systems or maximizing the software that's in use. Is it sort of implied there that they would be looking at how to optimize software leasing terms, renewal periods, those types of things?
No, no. The majority of our software we own. We don't lease, but what we're looking at is more along the lines of, just for example, Munis does more than accounting, okay? It does, it can do some licensing or permitting. They also have a tax collection package. So could we consolidate tax and assessment and accounting into one package? Would that be a good way to go? That's where I'm looking at with consolidation, you know, things like what the software that parks, or Planning is looking at. I think it has the possibility to do some of the billing that Public Works does. So could we eliminate, you know, the small software package they have and consolidate with that? When it comes to maximizing, the Finance Department took a good look at the accounting software about a year ago, and mainly with the payroll, and found that there were things that we were not using, I think probably because we've been using the system for almost 20 years, and you get, you know, sometimes you put in a quick way to do some things, but it's not the best way. So they've been doing a lot of work over the past year to maximize the ability of the software. So it probably happens with other pieces of software, that, you know, something comes up and you just use the quickest workaround that you can find, but maybe you're not making the most use of the software. Maybe there are things the software does that you didn't realize it could do, that you've been doing by hand.
Right.
So that's what we're talking about with the maximizing.
Okay. And further down, you reference minimizing points of sale for online services and online acceptance of payment methods, alternative payment methods. Are we planning that we will also sort of have that in the back of our mind to expand to the in-office options as well?
Yes, if it's available online, as long as, I can't see why it wouldn't be available.
Yeah, I'm just making sure.
Unless you're something like, you know, something like PayPal, how do you do that in the office? That's strictly an online kind of thing, unless we've set up a terminal in the hallway where you can transact your business.
Yeah.
But yeah.
And for the, for the acceptance of credit cards, it doesn't specifically say it, but I was thinking, when I was reading this, I was thinking is how do we minimize interchange in service fees? Is that sort of embedded in the consolidation concept?
Well, yeah, one of the things we're asking them to take a look at is reducing the merchant service providers, and, you know, and then we've got to do the negotiating with the merchant service providers ourselves to reduce our fees.
So yeah, the idea is if we, if we had fewer providers, we might have a bit more leverage in the negotiating process. Okay. And last but not least, it's not here. Are there any thoughts to sort of having, you know, an overall technology strategy for the town? Things like how to improve and optimize the town website, because as a user of the town website, I will say that it is a little bit clunky in terms of, you know, being able to easily find the things that you're after. You know, Krista already brought this up, but, you know, eventually it's probably a good idea for us to try to work with the Board of Ed to see if there are any other technology synergies that we haven't yet taken advantage of. And last but not least, this is my constant refrain, is to evaluate the need for a technology officer for the town separate from the Board of Ed.
So I did not ask them to evaluate the need for internal personnel, but they are, part of the scope of their work is to put together an information plan for any of the changes, upgrades that they recommend.
So we may have talked about this briefly, but, and I know I've talked about this with Kate, there are a variety of different information technology needs that have cropped up across the organization, not just with us here in Town Hall with our municipal services, but in the Darien Police Department, they have needs because of the large quantity of digital evidence that they now have to keep, and a variety of other things. And interestingly, the Darien Library is in the market for IT specialist. They're having great difficulty finding someone for that position, but I did mention that to Kate because I do think that we should be thinking about how we all can be working together, and I'm not opposed to the concept of having someone who specializes in municipal services, but really would want to have some more evidence to make the case for hiring that FTE and exactly what they would be tasked with doing, and how they would relate to the staff of the school IT system. So it's a work in progress, but certainly something we're open to.
Yeah, that's just something I think that probably the time is coming if it's not here, right, for the other, and for the other reasons that you mentioned in addition to, just for the, for the town, and you've been persistent in focusing on the safety issue.
Yes.
And I think that that would be, in my, in my mind, that would be one of the things that we'd have them involved in.
For sure.
Especially if we're going to start, you know, accepting alternative forms of payment, right, which are, are, you know, subject to hacking as much as anything. In fact, I got a fraudulent phishing text today.
Yep. Municipal governments, particularly small municipal governments, are a primary target for cyber hacking, and I think everybody probably read about New Orleans, I think, had a big cyber incident this past weekend. So it is top of mind. We did have Jeff Adams come and talk to us about cybersecurity. I don't have concerns today, but, but I would say that I'm not close enough to the work of the IT department in the school district to really know if I should have a high level of confidence, or if there's more that we could do to help backstop those efforts.
Could you just give an update as to what the timing is on all this?
Assuming the Board of Finance approves the transfer tomorrow, we will let the firm know, and they'll be starting right away. So our expectation, based on discussions I'd had with these people previously in terms of how long this would take, it should be done during the Board of Finance's budget review process. It'll be done by then.
Are we putting a placeholder for any work in the budget as a result of the study?
As a result of the study, I had not thought of doing that, no.
Okay.
But I'll talk to Jen about that tomorrow.
Okay. I wouldn't even know what to suggest, but we can talk about that.
That's one of the problems of trying to pick a placeholder, right?
Yeah.
Well, one thing we could possibly do, this doesn't eliminate all the money that was in the digitizing document project, so we could simply leave those funds there to be used for this.
Okay.
I'm glad we're doing this.
Yeah. I guess I would say, just to, you know, underscore that that's one thought process that we have, so not to sweep that project account.
Yeah.
Or repurpose it in some way for us, that'd be great.
So I'm sorry, so digitized documents, so what's standing with that?
Now, the project is done, so those were funds, we were taking all the old documents from the Planning Department and the Building Department and digitizing them. And it proceeded much quicker, much better than they had anticipated, so there was quite a significant balance left in the account. We used some of it maybe about two months ago, the Fire Marshal was here, we transferred some so that his old documents could be digitized.
Oh, I saw, right, 8,500 back in November, right?
Right, right. And so then we're taking this 40, but there's still a significant sum.
Okay, but the project is done and there?
The project is done, yes.
Okay.
So after this $40,000, how much is left in that account, do you know?
I think there's about 60 or 70.
Okay, all right.
It was a significant, yeah.
Okay, that's great. Any other questions about this transfer?
Barbara's doing the question.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion to approve the transfer of $40,000 from the digitized documents account to technology assessment. Krista moves, Sarah seconds. All those in favor? Okay. Thank you. We have, for our new members, the process is that our advisory boards work a little bit differently than our other board and commission appointments. They're all approved at the end of the year, and their, their work is for the next calendar year. And we, tonight, I would like to discuss and vote on the reappointment of the Advisory Board of Health, the Coastal Waters Advisory Committee, Government Access Television, TV 79, and the Advisory Committee on Sustainability. I will share with you that while we don't often have them come and speak to us, the Advisory Board of Health counsels regularly with our, our Health Director, and so I strongly recommend that we keep the Advisory Board in place. You know, at some point, we may even consider having this board not necessarily be advisory. Kate, I don't know, they've been in operation for a long time.
For a long time, yeah.
Coastal Waters continues to be a very active committee, and where would we be without TV 79? I would say that that's another group that someday perhaps shouldn't be advisory. And then the Advisory Committee on Sustainability, very much looking forward to their efforts, Sustainable CT. We now have eight members, although I did notice that the Advisory Committee on Sustainability is the only committee charged, that we don't have a stated number of members in the charge.
And that's sustainability?
Yeah. And I think it's something that we should consider. Right now, we have eight, and I might consider that we make that, even numbers are never good, in case the body has to take a vote. So we may want to, especially given the amount of work they have to do, consider expanding that to nine and putting it into the charge. We could do that at a future meeting. Does anyone have any questions on the work of any of these advisory committees? Yes, Kip.
Any chance it's going to be a shellfish commission?
Oh, yeah, I read that, I caught that.
Or has that been sort of like on, on the shelf for a long time?
A shellfish commission, so...
Close to what?
I just, I just saw it again, I've seen it last couple days.
Yes, so over the past two years, I have asked for specific assistance from the Advisory Committee on Coastal Waters for their expertise on shellfish, and they have been invaluable to me. My office and the Department of Health get involved in issuing permits for recreational shellfishing, and issuing licenses for our, our one and only commercial fisherman to fish in Darien managed waters. So that's a language unto itself. There are several members of the Commission on Coastal Waters that are quite knowledgeable about shellfishing, and while we don't have a shellfish commission, this board is acting as such. So at the moment, I'm comfortable with how it's operating. I don't feel the need to designate a separate body to do that work.
Do you want to take it out of one of the goals?
Well, we could, why don't, why don't I do this? Let's talk to the folks on the commission and see if they would be willing to simply expand their role and be, to be the shellfish.
I'm just, I know, I know it's been on there for quite a while, so I just figured, rather than keep having it as an aspiration, maybe just take it out.
Well, you know, it really is okay. It says until such time as a shellfish commission is formed, and that could be never. But we can follow up on that and fine tune their charge as well. Any other questions?
Just clarify then, why these are advisory, like what pushes them into a non-advisory status?
You'd have to have an ordinance or something that establishes them on a permanent basis. One of the advantages, the advisory, is the Selectmen have decided to form them. And one of the advantages with an advisory committee is people can serve on multiple commissions. You can't serve on a regular appointed or elected board, or more than one regular or appointed board. So like you can't be on the RTM and Planning and Zoning.
Got it, right.
But you can be on an advisory board and serve on another elected board.
Okay, so that's one distinction, and an important one, and the others are charter-based, that other boards and commissions are embedded in our charter, which would require charter reform.
Right. If you recall, a year or two ago, we wanted to reduce the number of people in the Veto Commission Committee. We had to actually have a charter change, go through the RTM, the whole thing.
Exactly. And it gives the Board of Selectmen a great deal of latitude over the work of those committees. You know, you can see how from when the Transfer Station Advisory Committee began, they were doing one thing, and then we expanded it several times, but we had the latitude to do that with their concurrents. So, you know, I would like to just put out the idea that there's a couple other advisory committees that I have thought might be of value to the community, and I certainly welcome your input on this, but thinking about our project on a community value statement, it might be great to form an advisory committee to, to work on that project so that we can expand it beyond town government and get some of the people involved who participated in the community conversation last week at the Darien High School. I think that would be of great value. We don't have a dedicated Economic Development Commission in the town of Darien. Jeremy Ginsburg and his department do a tremendous amount of work in that regard. We could certainly form an Advisory Committee on Economic Development. And something that's of great interest to me is that the future deployment of 5G, and try and find some experts in our community who might understand that technology and be able to help guide policymaking around the infrastructure and what it would mean for the town. So those are just a couple of new ideas that I have on advisory committees, and I, I welcome your thoughts on worthwhile projects.
With regards to the Coastal Waters Commission, is there any role for them in regards to the project at Pear Tree Beach?
Well, the Harbor Master is certainly engaged in that conversation.
I was just wondering, from helping with you, like the EPC-related stuff and the environmental things, and how, how any potential plans in sort of shaping the beach, the grade of the beach, or any of those types of things, might impact, you know, the sound itself, proper?
I don't know if they have someone or other, or more than one person on their commission that would have the kind of professional expertise to make that determination. I welcome any and all input on the studies that will be completed for Pear Tree. So I can't say if I think they have a role to play, but I, I wouldn't want to preclude anyone from participating in that discussion. Any other thoughts on these committees? Just so everybody knows, I'd like to share the names of the individuals that are volunteering and to thank them very much for their service. For the Advisory Board of Health, we have Kevin Cunningham, Andy Matheson, Mac Patrick, Jennifer Carter, and Christine Castles. Sorry, it's a little hard to read this. For TV 79, we have Robert Flynn, Sean Cavallo, Dennis Cummings, Carrie Wysocki, Jim Cameron, Mike Wheeler, and Dave Dever. On the Sustainability Committee, we have Beth Longo, Christine LaGenet, Dan Dulsetti, Carolyn Bain, Cliff Voorhees, Kathy Finnegan, Craig Flaherty, and Pam Sparkman. And on Coastal Waters, we have David Kahn, Eric Barrett, David, David Dever, Thomas Lochtefeld, William Wright, Grant Tankus, Frank Kemp, Robert, Robert, I'm sorry, I can't read your last name, Flip Hufford, Robert Vitter, and Bill Cavers. Robert S.
Yes.
Okay. We thank all of you for your continued participation in serving on our advisory committees. So I will entertain a motion to approve the reappointment of the Advisory Board of Health, the Coastal Waters Advisory Committee... the Coastal Waters Advisory Committee, Government Access Television, and the Advisory Committee on Sustainability.
So moved?
Kip moves, may I have a second? Sarah seconds. All those in favor? Thank you.
And thank you for their service.
Yes. Okay, we have regular meeting minutes of December 2nd. Any additions or changes? I'm looking at you, Kip.
And that's Kip.
Okay.
Oh, it's from his, yeah.
Other than Kip's, are there any other additions or changes? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve as amended.
So moved?
Kip moves, Sarah seconds, all those in favor? Thank you. And we have special meeting minutes of December 2nd. I'll entertain a motion to approve. Sarah moves, David seconds. All those in favor? Okay, thank you very much.
And Kip, just to clarify those, your suggestions were regarding your, your report?
Yes.
Just to clarify for the public, that, so I would, we would support your updating your own report?
Correct.
Okay.
I'm just trying to make it, if you can't read that, Kate, I'll get it to you.
And I think I've got it. I've gotten good at, you know, not just yours, but handwriting.
I thought mine was very clear.
Okay, we have no public here tonight for public comments, so we'll move to agenda review.
Well, do we want to put on a discussion about other possible advisories as a? I hadn't really put thought into it, but maybe not for the 6th, maybe for, after the 6th, so yeah.
Maybe into February.
Yeah, whenever appropriate, whenever it fits. I think that's, just we have it on the calendar.
Perfect. Anything else? I might bring a recommendation on the community value statement to you before we discuss other advisory committees, just to really keep the momentum going on that.
Yeah. We don't need to clarify that clearly we'd like the update on the technology report. Okay.
No, you know, when we get it, we're just going to do it.
I was going to say, just for the record.
Okay, I'm hearing nothing else, I'll, I'll take another moment of privilege now that I've collected myself a little bit better, and to acknowledge Mark Thorne's extraordinary work to the town of Darien. Served as selectman from 2017, 17 to 2019, he's been on the RTM F and B, he served on the Pear Tree Beach Building Committee, the Consolidated Services Working Group, has been a very active participant in the Darien Men's Association, he rings the bell for the Salvation Army. And I actually met Mark a long time ago, before any of us were really in town service, at least I think I, before me. We sang together in the choir at the first congregational church, and, and I gave that up when I joined the board, but he did not, so.
He has done it for many years.
For a very long time, and I think that Mark and Barbara, more so than any other town volunteers, came to every single town-sponsored event.
They did.
They did, and it was always such a joy that he had good spirit about him, he cared deeply for the town of Darien, and he will be missed.
Very much so.
Okay, so I will, with that, entertain a motion to adjourn. Krista? And then seconded by David, all those in favor? Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep, happy holidays.
Yes.